Move forward with that and a lot of private sector managers, because the private sector manages it, manages things a lot better, they're more efficient. And, um, you know, they hold their people accountable. If you're not doing something right in the private sector in a job, you don't, you don't get to hang around and manage it for four or five years. You're cut because they're, they're about making money. So, you know, it's, it's simple things like that. Cutting down, we have a spending problem. So cutting down the spending, focus on our core services and focus on doing well, to where our cities are attractive for, for developers and private sector, for the private sector to come in and say, hey, I want to open up a business here in Baytown. Cause Baytown looks good. Baytown's a safe place. Our shrubs look good. There's no sewage in the street. Uh, there's no potholes. Hey, I want to open up a business here. It's very simple. It's common sense economics. That's how we do it.
I need the ninety seconds real quick if I could.
Oh, by the way, I didn't need a ton of degrees to even know that. It's usually just really basic.
You need to use your memory. Do you have a closing, you have a closing statement? So thank you all for that. Alright, so the next question is, why is money being spent on events over a hundred thousand dollars? And we're allowing people on committees to profit off of this. This is unethical. How will we know that you won't bring your friends to gain contracts? What is your policy and the city's policy on this? Ken?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Why is money being spent on events over a hundred thousand dollars? And we are allowing people on committees to profit off of this. This is unethical. How will we know that you won't bring your friends to gain contracts? What is your policy and the city's policy on this?
I've been clear on this. It is unethical. Totally agree. Our, our cities, our events are advertised as family, family friendly events. And it should be, there should be more oversight to those family friendly events to make sure that entertainment we bring in is in fact family friendly. And I've made myself clear on this. That all of our events, whether it be, you know, Fourth of July, burrito, um, Juneteenth, or Christmas, all that needs to be have oversight by our city council to make sure that the events one is, is in fact family friendly as advertised. Anybody who wants to come can come. And the reason that if they don't come, it's not because we're not providing a family friendly atmosphere. That's something I've, I've been explicit about and really getting, everything should be in-house. These are your public dollars. Nobody should ever have a say of what happens on anything to do with your public dollars. No outside people from Houston or, or anything. It should be done publicly. We have, we have a great, uh, parks committee. I have my parks committee member right there, Mr. Joseph Fallon stepping up, young guy. He's going to do great things on the parks. He's just, he's just serving. So we, we have people who are well equipped to make a decision to, to make sure we have family friendly atmosphere and, and that your, your dollars, decisions with your public dollars are being made in-house.
A reminder, the question is, why is money being spent on events over a hundred thousand dollars? And we're allowing people on committees to profit off of this. This is unethical. How will we know that you won't bring your friends to gain contract? What's your policy and the city's policy on this?
Well, first of all, I would tell you, you know, I haven't been involved with what's happening here, but when we were doing it, we, we didn't have those problems. But I will say this. I think we need to cut out all these extra events, you know? We're all Americans. We celebrate on the Fourth of July and that's it. That's enough. Because if we went around celebrating everybody's culture, we would spend millions and millions of dollars. So I would just say this, cut everything. I would be in favor of cutting everything except for the Fourth of July and celebrating our country and our patriotism and, and save that money. We don't have the money to be spending there. And i- i- if, if something like that happened where whoever hired family members and they made money off of these events, then it is unethical and it's wrong. And I would look at getting an investigator to, to check into that. Because there's a lot of things that have been happening on council, uh, over the years that I heard. I mentioned earlier that some people were going to Vegas and doing stuff, you know, on CityDive. And, uh, all that kind of stuff needs to stop. And until, this is the way we're going to tackle that again. Is you put people in there that you know are there to serve you and that are going to vote the way you want them to vote. Until we do that, you're going to continue to complain and, and pay those higher taxes and pay for all these events that they're doing. I mean, there's things that go on that we don't even know about. You gotta stop it. No, she didn't stop me. I said, she didn't have to stop me this time.
Can I remember?
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah, to, to his point. Of our events is something that can be turned over. The funding can be turned over to the private sector as well. You know, one of the arguments I heard is that, you know, these events actually bring money into economy. Well, that's great. That means that private, our private, there'll be private investors and businesses that will be jumping head over tail to help fund these events. So, um, you know, again, one way to also eliminate, you know, the play, play for play politics and, and getting your friends in on that is to keep it in-house. And to, and to fund it, we need to step outside the box. This idea that it's not going to be a good event unless the city's throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars into it is just pure fallacy. So we need to make, we, we need to, we need to think outside the box and reach out to, to, uh, private, uh, uh, investors to help fund some of these events.
Did I run out of time or?
No, you didn't run out.
I just want to say one last thing.
You still had thirty seconds ago.
You know, again, it comes back to the mayor. The mayor, you know, he, uh, he was on the Juneteenth committee and, you know, lays a hundred thousand dollars for the Juneteenth committee. And to me, that's a little unethical to be doing that. And, uh, if, if, if our leaders, he's supposed to be our leader. If he's doing it, how many doors does that open up to everybody else to, to do unethical things? What we have here is failed leadership. And I will say this along with that. You know, it's unfortunate that he won, and I'll tell you why. Because he was a rubber stamp for the mayor before. And he did everything that the mayor before him did. He voted for the T thirty-six law course. He voted for, you know, this hotel. He did everything and how he won, you know, is because it was split vote. You know, and actually, until we get rid of those people and he's one of the main ones, uh, we're not going to have any principles or values here in Baytown. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Um, our next question is also here tonight. Um, what would be your main objective in the first ninety days if elected, Mercedes?
Uh, work on three things. Getting rid of city manager. I know it don't happen that fast, you know, but just being elected, they would know that I'm coming to make some changes. Just the fact that I get elected, it would be a change. And I would, I would work there. I would work on, on, uh, on that seventy-five million and, you know, bringing it back to the general fund. Uh, I would work on getting rid of this hotel. And like I said, it's a process. It ain't ninety days. I mean, it's hard to do anything in ninety days. But I would plant the seeds and that's where we start. So, and I've been doing that. I helped this guy beat Johnson the first time. I worked every day when I was off to get this guy elected. I like King Griffin. I hope he wins again, by the way. Uh, he's done a good job, very good job. Uh, he's not perfect, but it's harder when you get up there. Like I said, city tries to suck you in. And, uh, but that wouldn't happen with me. It wouldn't happen. It didn't happen at the school district. It ain't going to happen at the city either. But, uh, you know, there's priorities and we need to take care of those. Those priorities would be getting rid of city manager, making some big changes. Uh, you know, at least planting those seeds to get the ball rolling. I would work with him when he gets reelected. Cause I don't think the other two will make it if I can have a say. But, uh, get rid of them, put in new, new, new council people and go from there. And, uh, that's, that's all we can do. Go to work, roll up my sleeves and, you know, listen and know that a lot of times when these guys are, you know, doing things, that you better do your homework. Cause they're, they're sneaky. They're very sneaky. They use committees. They use, you know, they bring a committee. Well, the committee recommended this, so, you know, but, but it's the citizens committee, like the citizens' bond committee, so. I mean, if it ain't right, it ain't right. If this, if they, if these developers come in and we need to vet them properly. Make sure right off the bat, they're not related or friends to anybody that, that here on the city. If the mayor or anybody else brings somebody in, they need to be vetted even more. I mean, we gotta stop overlooking. We need more oversight over all the things that are going on at the city. And I would start right there. And I just, I've mentioned a lot tonight that, you know, about the mayor and things and that are going on. And that's me as an outsider. I haven't been involved over there. I've been involved over there at, at the school district, but those, but I'm, I'm connected a lot with a lot of people, so I hear a lot. You know, and there are people that are concerned and we all need to be concerned.
Thank you. The reminder, the question is, what would be your main objective in the first ninety days if elected?
First ninety days moving forward is, one is, is keep establishing accountability for some of our failed vanity projects. Let them know that, uh, I want to see a resolution. Um, if that resolution is some people in, in yellow, orange gumshoes, I'm for that. I'm against that. Uh, you know, establish, you know, my plan to get our infrastructure up to some, um, and those projects. Um, you know, instill, make sure we ensure our life and family values are protected, um, as we move forward. I'll continue to be doing what I've said I'm going to do. And I said I was going to, uh, protect family values, restore ethics. I, because I ran on, on ethics. And because of my work, uh, for the first hundred fourteen years, we have an ethics committee. I've reestablished that. So I use, I use an opportunity of a false ethics complaint, turned it around and made something good. And that's what happens. That's what you do. When adversity comes your way, you turn things around and you, you make it in your favor. And for the benefit of the citizens, you have now an avenue to hold city council. It's not perfect. It's not perfect, but we have an ethics committee. It's a start. It's a step in the right direction of transparency and accountability. So, that's what I'll.
We're going to do two more questions, okay? Um, the next one is, how are you going to handle the budget requirements when the mayor wants more money for frivolous expenses? Ken?
Repeat the question again?
Yes. How are you going to handle the budget requirements when the mayor wants more money for frivolous expenses?
Yeah, I want to prove it. Plain and simple. We got it. We got to get our spending under control. I think I've been clear on this. You know, we gotta tighten our belt. We gotta focus on our core services. I did a little thought study the other day and I, I looked to see what, what are the symptoms of a, of a city that's on the road to bankruptcy? And, uh, I, I had a come to Jesus moment when I looked it up, you know? Hope that library hours starting to be diminished. Um, you know, core services starting to be neglected. And I was like, oh, that looks familiar. And, um, we have an opportunity to turn that around. That's the good news. We gotta make good decisions starting today. And we don't have time to revend the wheel with other candidates who, who want to keep things the way they are and the pay for play. Um, one of our candidates have, uh, have two, uh, grants out to try to put money in, in, in her people's pocket. We gotta stop that. You know, trying to strong arm our city, our city, uh, our city, uh, leadership and myself to try to get those, those, that money fuck cycle into her, into her hands. And that's why she running against me. That, that's what's going on. That's why. Cause I won't be that person to say, oh, to be, to nega- negotiate our, our processes and, and, and strong arm and, and be that old, that old good old boy guy to get money into her hands. That's why I have, that's how I have one of my opponents. So, you know, and that's enough. The buck stops here. We gotta, we gotta focus on our core services.
A reminder, the question is, how are you going to handle the budget requirements when the mayor wants more money for frivolous expenses?
I would just tell them that we don't have any money. Hey, we're going to take away the money you got right now, but we don't have any money. We're broke. We're literally broke, city of Baytown. And, uh, we don't have any money for any expenditures whatsoever. So that's, that's a no-brainer there for me. And if he looked at me, he would know that already. He knows me, so he would know I'm, I'm not trying to hear that. Give me more money. Especially after all the stories I heard from the, the last mayor and the expenditures they were having and the trips and all the other things that were going on, you know, and, uh, I never did that. Uh, when I, when I was on council, I, I voted against paying us. I didn't even want that money. I figured we volunteered to serve. We shouldn't get paid for that. You know, and I would tell you right now, if, if we eliminated that, you would eliminate a lot of the candidates that run for city council. Cause it's a lot of work and no pay. You know, and so, but, you know, we need to, those are some of the steps that we really seriously need to take. And I would tell you another thing. When, when they, when they, uh, canceled the ethics commission, that tells you a lot right there. Contracts are given. You didn't have to do, they were just handing out contracts. No vetting, no nothing. That, that's why they canceled that ethics commission. I can tell you that right now. It was, we would have never thought of doing that. That's one of the must, uh, committees that we, that I do believe in is having that ethics. Now, some people try to abuse it like they did against my opponent here, you know, but, you know, that's, that's not right. Uh, it was a political move and, uh, it was a money venture when they did away with it. That's what it's all about. It's about money. In every organization that I've been involved in and I've been serving for twenty years, there's been money, you know, whether you, they, they treat you to a steak at Ruth's Steakhouse or whether they take you somewhere and, you know, get you drunk, feed you, whatever it is. They're wanting something in return. When you have these, you know, these, these entrepreneurs paying for city leaders, uh, vacation, trips, you know, that kind of stuff, it's unethical. Because we will eventually vote on one of their projects, whether they're, it's an engineering company, you know, or planning company, whatever. They're doing it for a reason. And I've seen it. At first, when I was new, I, I, I almost stopped. She stopped me.
Alright, so last question. I think we've tried to get to a variety of different topics tonight. If we don't, if we don't ask your question, I pretty much asked pretty much the ones that we've gotten here today. But remember, after the forum, we will have a meeting greet out here in the foyer. So if you want to stay around and ask any question you like, they'll be, uh, happy to talk with you afterwards. But our last question for this evening is, online, city council members suffer frequent criticism in their role. How would you handle any public criticism directed at you, Mercedes?
Well, I don't know if anybody in Baytown has had more criticism, whether it was in the Baytown sun, by the Baytown sun, by other people. I mean, I've, I've had a lot of criticism, you know, people. Some people, they hate me because of what they heard. They don't even know me, you know, but I've always been straightforward. I speak the way I speak, you know, and if, and I might not always say what you want to hear. I'm not that kind of person. So it, it pisses them off, for lack of better words, that, you know, I say what I say. Like the things I said tonight, I guarantee you, there's no other candidate that would say what I said tonight. And I don't, I'm not saying that in arrogance. I'm just saying, I, I, I'm not here to play. Uh, this is for real. Uh, Baytown is for real. I love Baytown. You know, I, I've served all over, whether it's at Lee College, you know, I grew up here. I was the student body president. I was, you know, nominated who's who, about, did all kinds of things. And it gave me that start. Robert Lee, all these schools, the teachers there, you know, most of them were white. And they were good to us. A lot of the, the Hispanic people in this area, they love them. That's why I ran for school board when they tried to change the name. No, it, it wasn't like that with us. They taught us well. I wouldn't be here today if it wouldn't be for some of the teachers that, that coached me and taught me. So, you know, criticism, i- if, if you can't handle being a representative and taking some criticism, don't do it. Don't do it. You know, I heard his opponent talking about him, about he been, him being too heavy, you know, and trying to say other things. See, he looks, he looks good, right? He looks good. But, you know, you're going to take criticism. You know, and I, I, you know, if you can't handle the heat, stay out of the kitchen is what they say, right? Uh, you know, just like these, I, I've been in debates where, even in this last debate, I almost got kicked out, you know, because I was saying what I wanted to say. And I also am going to participate in the, the League of Women Voters, uh, forum. I call them debates because I'm going to say what I want to say. They're, it's a league, it's a forum. So why? Because I know they say bad things about me all the time, you know, and I, I see them. They post them. They, you know, especially with social media. You know, it, it's a part of serving, you know? You just got to, you know, be strong, you know, and, and deal with it, you know? So I deal with it. I don't take nothing personally. I mean, I'm even friends with these guys again. They get mad at me. David Ozzie's talking to us one time. He's, he's, he's a good friend of mine. Good.
Alright, it's time.
That's a good thing there aren't four people here tonight, right?
Yeah, we got some other questions there. They missed out. Um, Ken, uh, my reminder, the question is, city council members suffer, suffer frequent criticism in their role. How would you handle any public criticism directed at you?
I use that as an opportunity to learn and grow from my citizens. One thing I tell everybody or telling me, sometimes they call me and say, Ken, you're doing a good job. Keep it up. I said, would you tell me if I wasn't? Cause I want to hear about it if I wasn't. If there's something wrong, I want to hear from you. I just want to hear from you when it's all sunny and roses. I want to hear from your issues. I want to hear what, what your, your, your issues are so I can bring it before city council and represent you well. I don't shy away from criticism. I run to it. I embrace it. Cause I, cause it's with that pain, you're, that uncomfortable conversations is where we're going to grow as a city. So whether you have, I'm, that's great. You got something good to say to me. That's fine. But I want to hear what your issues are. I want to hear what your heart is. I want to hear what's, what you're struggling with day in day with our city. And I want to bring that to the city council because I, that, because that's what y'all deserve. This is what y'all asked for. So if you have an issue, I, I, I've, I've been extremely responsive. Even the acts my, my camp, my opponents, they will tell you that, that I've been responsive to them and their issues and I didn't shy away from their issues. I've tried to help them. I've helped this Renita Price get projects on U-Paw and Lakewood on their roads and their Pothos building. If you ask them, I'll let my opponents tell you about how I, how I've approached, um, you know, issues and, and, and ad- ad- adversity and not hearing that thing I wanted to hear. We need that. We need that at city hall. We need, we don't need people just going to shy away and dismiss those voices as negative. That's what, that's not what we need right now. We need to hear from you. If you, if, if, if you have an issue, I don't care if they disagree with me. There's people here that will come and show up and they'll say something and that. I, I want to hear from you. I'm glad, if you're at city hall and you took the time out of your day, you know, we're blue collar town. People work twelve hours a day, seven days a week. So if you felt the need to come sit in front of city hall, you got my attention. Good, bad or indifferent, I want to hear what you have to say. You got my full attention and I'm taking that very seriously. If you get, if you took time to email me or call me, you have a, you have issue. And you don't need to be dismissed as a negative or naysayer just because you're not saying something that, that goes against the status quo of city hall. So I welcome that. I ran because of that. I ran because people wanted being heard and their voices were being dismissed. And I've taken it on the chin. I've taken it. I don't mind being, you know, yelled at and, and hearing people, you know? I don't mind having, uh, deep conversations. I have one in person back and forth and disregarding that key. He tells me like it is, right? He tells me and I listen to him. And I, and I hear him and I've heard him. I heard him on the, on the parks where he, where for years he was trying to get, uh, the parks having safer rubber pellets in the parks. And, and I heard him. I didn't dismiss him like he was being dismissed in the past as some, as somebody just being negative. He had a real argument and I worked to help get those, those parks in safer condition for our kids. So that's what, that's what I do. I welcome, I welcome those naysayers. I welcome that adversity.
Thank you so much. So, so that concludes our, uh, questions.
Do I got another second?
You have, you have taken your.
I did that for a while. I thought I started it.
Three and a half times. So now, um, so we're going to give you both, uh, three minutes to have a closing statement. Ken, uh, with, um, second in the opening, so we're going to give him an opportunity to lead us with a closing statement for three minutes.
Again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for trusting me to be your District Three Representative. It has been an honor and a privilege representing you and serving you on our city council. I believe, uh, leadership is a byproduct of service. It's not the other way around. And, and, and I set out to serve my, my district and, and I, and I believe I've served it well. And I'd like to have the opportunity to serve in the future. We are in a critical stage of, of our city. We're at a crossroads. We're kind of an adolescent city with, with a lot of issues that, that need to be handled before we move forward. And, and we can move forward, but not at the expense of some of those foundational issues that need to be addressed. We have the spending problem. We need to get a hold of our spending. I want to, I want to be the voice of that. We have some vanity projects that we need to put on hold. We need to turn that over to the private sector. I want to be your voice continuing. I, I, this, this is more than just about a city council seat. This is about the future of our city. And I recognize that. We need prudent thinkers and prudent decision makers in city hall at this point and juncture in our city to make the right decisions for our city moving forward. Not just for today, but for the next twenty years. What kind of city are your grandkids and your kids and your nieces and my nieces who I love are going to grow up in? That, that, that's why I make the decisions, not just for right now, but for the future. So again, thank you all. Thank you all for allowing me to serve. I, I asked for your vote at, uh, uh, at this poll. Do not take, do not take your local government for granted voting for this. Your vote matters. These votes come down to one or two votes. My, my last election came down to sixty votes. Don't sit this out thinking maybe I'm just a popular guy and, and they're just going to vote. Don't, don't, don't let that thought affect your mind. Go out and vote. Take, do it now. Do it between October twentieth and October thirty-first. Do it early so you get in and get out. If you, if you miss it, you got November fourth. But go and vote. Vote wisely. Make a wise decision. This is not a laughing matter. I've never taken this as a laughing matter. I take this as serving the people that have been so wonderful to myself and my family. And giving back has been an awesome, awesome pleasure. So thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Mercedes, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
Alright, tell me when to go. Tell me when the clock starts. Well, I also want to thank y'all for coming. I want to apologize for being a little bit late. I was running behind from work and I got caught up, but I'm honored to, uh, again, I'm honored to be here. I'm, I'm honored to participate, uh, in whatever forum there is. I, I, in order for us to solve problems, I'm going to have to go to the League of Women Voters and you know how that goes, but yeah, we'll find out. But, uh, yeah, yeah. But, uh, you know, I'm not afraid. Uh, you know, we're all brothers and sisters at the end of the day. And, you know, I'm going to go, uh, talk to them and, and share the same things that I shared here or more, depending on how that, that evolves. But, you know, before I start, I want to say, I endorse this guy totally a hundred percent, Ken. I'm, I'm endorsing. He's a, he's a really nice guy. He's too nice, but he's a real nice guy. Cause some of the things that lady, that lady said about him, I would have said something back, but he don't, he don't say nothing, you know, but he's a good guy. I endorsed him. I endorsed him the last time. He did a great job. He's not perfect, but he, he does a good job. And he does voice his opinion and, you know, he stands up for what's right. And I, I wanted to say that, uh, again, I, I, I thank y'all for being here tonight and I apologize. I talk loud, not because I talk loud, it's because I'm deaf from working in the plant so long. I got, somebody, he, he called me and I'm, I'm watching TV. Like he, he called me and I said, he go, man, your TV's loud. I said, yes. I said, it sounds good to me. I can barely hear you. I talk loud because I'm, you know, I can't hear too good. I, I work around a lot of rotating equipment and, and, you know. I talk loud because I'm, you know, I can't hear too good, I, I work around a lot of rotating equipment and, and, you know, all that kinda stuff, so, you know. And when I was young, I used to listen to loud music with speakers right behind, in my truck, that really daffied me up a little. But I also wanna thank Nick, Marga, and Wyver for putting on this today, you know. Last time we got into a little headbutt and going on, but, you know, it, it is what it is and, you know, I, I'm thankful for what they do, you know, I, I really do believe that, again, I'll say this again, all these forums and stuff, we should be having them at city hall. We shouldn't be here at Lee College, we should be at city hall, right in the chambers. It's not holy ground there, we used to have our debates and everything over there. But see, city hall wants to keep everybody out away from city hall, that's how they do, you know, and, uh, but, you know, I'm thankful to be here, I'm thankful that they put this on again, uh, in form, oh, I got seconds, okay. Uh, I ask you to vote for Rand Terea, uh, in District One, if you live in District One, I've served all my life, this is my life, it's service. I'm here for you guys, and I would ask that you vote for me. And if not, I will continue to serve on the school board, but that's not my priority, my priority is to be here, so, uh, please vote Rand Terea, and you won't regret it, I promise you that.
Thank you so much, um, I'm gonna turn over to Marga just for a brief minute to tell you about some voting information if you're not registered to vote, um, and some voting, uh, dates and locations briefly.
First of all, I'd like, uh, thank you candidates for coming and speaking, and, uh, I thank you also for stepping up and serving the community, because nowadays, a lot of people don't wanna step up and be candidates because of the ugliness that it can become, and it does get ugly, politics is ugly. You have to be very bold, you have to be very accepting criticism because it's out there, and now with social media, everybody's on the attack. They don't like you, and it's usually the same people actually, they, that attack. It's not a clean, uh, candidacy anymore, those days are over. So, that's why you see a lot of few people stepping up to the plate and accepting to do for the community. And like I, I, Mercedes said, if there was no money involved, you'd be seeing less people. And what happens now is they're self-serving, they serve themselves. These two candidates here, they're not self-serving, trust me, I know them personally, and, uh, they're out there for the people. They speak for everybody, and that's the kinda candidates we need, is people that speak out for you and do for you, and not just sit back and do for themselves, so I applaud y'all for doing that. And also, early voting is October twentieth through the thirtieth. It will be at the Baytown Community Center from seven AM to seven PM. I will be one of the judges there, so I hope to see your faces there, and please vote down the ballot. Don't just go in there and vote for one candidate and done, finished, there's a propositions on there. If you go on HarrisCounty.org, you will see HarrisVotes.org, I'm sorry. You will see all the propositions on there, and be sure to read them twice, cuz they're, they're language, um, the propositions are very tricky. So, make sure you read them correctly, and, uh, like I say, when you go vote, we don't rush you out of there. So take your time, or go, like I said, HarrisVotes.com, or, I'm sorry, and, uh, read them or print it out, and you can bring the printout with you, but you can't use your phone, but you can bring papers and say, oh, I know what I'm gonna vote this one. You already done your research, and just go bring your papers in there, but you cannot use your phone. Also, election day, okay, Baytown Community Center and J.D. Walker will be early voting. Election Day, we have thirteen locations. So, uh, I'm gonna name them off real quick, uh, that way you'll know, but please go vote early voting, and the reason I say that is cuz you have all two weeks to go vote. Election Day, you only have one day, and if you go, oh, I'm gonna go work, vote on election day, and you forget, that means you don't vote. And the candidates lose your vote. We need y'all to go out there and vote, and vote for the propositions and the candidates. So, on, uh, also, the candidates do a count, they know what they need to go do because they're looking at all the votes and they need to go knock on doors after early voting to find out how many more votes they can go get. So, please vote early voting. Election Day is November fourth, and it's gonna be Ashwell Smith, Baytown Community Center, Cedar Bya Junior School Comfort Suites, Days of All Elementary, Goose Creek Robotics Center, Goose Creek Technology Center, uh, North Main, Goose Creek Memorial High School, J.D. Walker, James Boo Elementary, Lee College Gymnasium, Navarre Funeral Home, and William D. Travis will be the election day locations. And if you're not registered to vote, come see me, I have these forms and I will register you to vote. And, uh, that's real simple, all you have to do is fill it out, and you're gonna have to put a stamp on it, you just throw it in the mailbox, and you'll get your card before voting.
October sixth is the last day, so that's Monday.
Monday, yeah, so, I will also be at Greatham Fest, so I'll have a booth out there for registering to vote.
But we're canceling that. I don't got the money.
But anyway, uh, be sure to vote, and again, thank you, and Nick's gonna tell you a little bit about what's on the ballot too with, uh, the police department.
Yes, so, um, I do, uh, serve on a few boards and committees in town, I am the president of the Baytown Crime Control and Prevention District, which means I also sit on the, um, Baytown Chamber of Commerce's Public Safety Committee, so on behalf of myself, Barry Hawkins, who is the president of the Fire Control Prevention District, we have been working, um, very closely together on the upcoming continuation election for the crime and fire control districts, so, just to put it out there, this is not, uh, it'll be at the very end of your ballots, the very last two items that you see after the city of Baytown propositions, you will see the CCPD and the Fire Control District. Those have been around for almost twenty years, um, they, it is not a new tax, it is not a tax increase, it is a sales tax that we pay. And approximately forty percent of that comes from, uh, visitors to our city, shop and do business here, so Baytown residents are not the only ones paying this tax, and each of these districts, um, generate about two and a half million dollars each in revenue, so two and a half million for police, two and a half million for fire. Um, these districts are, are really critical to keep. Um, I just wanna give you some figures out there, um, a one patrol, uh, vehicle is almost a hundred thousand dollars, okay? So we just ordered a dozen of them for our city, that's about one point two million dollars. A fire engine replacement, one point three million. This is a very interesting one, a stretcher, like the ones that they come out of the ambulances, forty thousand dollars for a stretcher. It, it, it's, it's, it's mind-blowing to see these, these figures. So, these special districts help pay for those expenses that would otherwise have to come from our city's general fund, which is generated by, mainly by property taxes, these are, these crime and fire control districts are sales taxes, they are not property taxes. So it has nothing to do with the value of your home. Um, but we really need these districts to continue, I will just say, if they don't continue, you will still be paying the tax anyway. The county or another entity could come in and put, uh, their sales tax initiative on the ballot, you'll still be paying, and then we can never have the crime and fire control district on the ballot, and if these fail, we can't put it back on the ballot for several years, so like I said, this is not a new tax, it's not a tax increase. So please keep that in mind, it's at the bottom of your ballot, like Marga said, please get, get your sample ballots, HarrisVotes.com, please read them. Um, like I said, these are, these have nothing to do with the bonds, I wanna make that very clear, they have absolutely nothing to do with the A through F that you'll see, so I'm not here to tell you how to vote on those, you can do your own research on that, but, um, they have nothing to do with bonds, they are the last two items. So they're very critical to our community, um, we have some, uh, wonderful officers that are here tonight, they'll be happy to speak with you about it as well, as they, we also have yard signs, if you want to take them home with you. Um, but I encourage you, please go vote yes to keep these critical districts, they are absolutely critical to our public safety, um, in Baytown, so, thank you very much.
Okay, this time we have a meet and greets, so y'all meet with the candidates and talk to them, and again, thank y'all for coming.